Go right to our visitors. If you can identify yourself for the record, since I can't see over there, we'll start over here to the right in the front row.
Jeff Cross of it, visitor.
I'm Holly Cawicke, I'm a member of the community and my daughter's a kindergartner and I'm here for the PTO.
Rob Cunningham, visitor.
Jennifer Tillman, I'm a parent and I'm also on board from the PTO.
Faith Wolf, I'm a college observer.
Carl Cromer, food service director.
Sam Mary, EAEA.
Kim Deloya, EAEA.
Anita Hand, EAEA.
Robin Rogers, parent.
Thank you for coming tonight. And there's no issues that you wish to discuss at this point, we'll come back to the visitors at the end of the meeting, but we'll go to Mr. Panzini.
Thank you, Senator. Turn over to the administrators, every Monday I like to let them kind of do a report. And we're also gonna have a report of our school performance profile tonight before we also, we thought we'd do it tonight instead of Thursday, but I'll let Mr. Labe start.
Thank you, everybody. First thing I have is from our school newspaper, I don't think we've ever done this at the board level, and Mrs. Pigza, our sponsor, thought it'd be a good idea to give you the first issue of the school year. I'll let you guys have a copy of that. What they do, we have a newspaper class that meets first period every day, and each person in the class, about 24 students in the class, they take a different angle, as you can see, as you can look through there, some different articles. They sell these at school for 50 cents, usually the proceeds just go and the costs average out to printing concerns and so forth, they do everything here, nothing gets sent out anymore. But it's something that we wanted to show off for you guys to take a look at, they'll put a couple additions out during the school year, so next time, next year comes around, we'll try to get those ones in your lap as well. So, something you can take, take a look at, something we're proud of with students, and like I said, Mrs. Pigza does a good job with the first period students, so. On another note, I met with the film crew for tomorrow's assembly for Leslie Sabo. It came down on Saturday, I met with them, we walked the building for about an hour and showed them the auditorium. This morning, they took the whole morning to videotape a man that was there with Leslie that day. And I got a chance to talk to him, and it was very emotional for him, obviously, and they interviewed him for a couple hours. So, I know this afternoon, the film company, they were down by Leslie statue there in the community, they were also going to interview somebody else at the coffee shop, I didn't catch his name. Tomorrow's assemblies, we're gonna start a little bit after 1:00, so if anybody's asking you in the community, we're not turning anybody down, we're gonna have juniors and seniors there. I don't know about anybody else, just because I want to make sure we have availability to the community to be there as well. We put it in the newspapers, I think The Ledger and The Beard County Times ran a story this weekend, Newcastle News, I think I saw it on ElwoodCity.org this afternoon. We're telling everybody, if you're coming from the community, be in the office by 1:00, try to get everybody to see it, it can start about 1:15. If you haven't looked at that website, the Brush of a Hero website, just do a Google search Brush of a Hero, there's a five or six minute video clip, and when you're done watching that, if you're not emotional, then we'll check your pulse, because it's gonna be a pretty good presentation, I'm excited, just from what I saw so far from the company. I asked the lady today, this will probably be aired in March on the Inspire Network once they get their 10 part series all filmed. They were in Houston last week, New York, out in Los Angeles, so once they get all 10 episodes filmed and cut up, it'll be in the springtime when it'll be aired. But it's gonna be a good event to show up, obviously the school will win and to recognize Leslie and Rose and the whole family. George's gonna be here to talk tomorrow. There's a two-star retired Army general that I talked to last week, General Jackson, he's coming in from Arlington, Virginia, to present tomorrow, so it'll be a good experience for the whole school, so that's something that's on the horizon tomorrow.
Should we just come before coming tomorrow?
Yes, just come to the office, yes, come to the office, I'm gonna have people there and sort of walk, you know, visitors up, keep them sort of together. I'd like to get the whole event started about 1:15, make sure we have time before dismissal, so that's why I'm telling people one.
Thank you. Ms. Gibson?
Good evening. We also have two Veterans Day programs, one at Perry starting at 9:30, I'm gonna go over to enjoy that program at Perry. Our elementary guidance counselor, Ashley Gelati, is a veteran and she has organized that assembly for the Perry students, and I'm her supervisor, so I'm going to go over and just enjoy that with her. And also, we have a Veterans Day program at 1:30 at Northside. We usually have a full house of veterans and family members at Northside, and you're all welcome to join us there as well. I want to thank PTO, last Friday, we had a pretty special event at all of the schools. We had a group of Chinese acrobats come to Northside, Perry and Hartman, for an assembly. It was something that we'd been trying to get for years, and Kathy McCollum's persevered, found them in Pennsylvania, and not only were we able to book them, but we booked them at a greatly discounted price, because they were in the area and they were looking for a couple additional schools to attend. And our children, grades K through 6, really enjoyed that. It was something a lot of the kids in Elwood may never have an opportunity to see, and it was very, very enjoyable. All of the performers, there was only one person in the entire group that could speak English, but they were just very, very entertaining and had lots of great facial expressions. They did juggling and contortionist routines and balancing and just things that, it was just purely a pleasure to see the kids enjoying a show of that caliber. On Wednesday at Northside, we have dental exams. On Wednesday night, we have about 100 parents and families scheduled to come to a wellness program, a health and wellness program for grades K through 6. November 19th, Northside is going to have a weather emergency day, so it's a drill, we're just practicing. We are continuing to look at two reading series, Pearson and McGraw-Hill, and we're going to meet in December to review how that pilot program is coming along. We've had about 200 parents in the Northside building, helping with all kinds of things, like centers and parties and activities, projects. We also are almost finished, before Thanksgiving, we'll have met face-to-face with almost every parent in Northside. We have one-on-one conferences scheduled, if we can't get them in the door, we call them, we reschedule, we try to do the face-to-face, but if they don't have transportation, we do a phone conference, but we try to give each parent that 30 minutes of one-on-one time for them to be able to ask questions and learn about what's going on in the classroom and how their child's doing. And that's all I have this evening. Oh, and we also had, I wanted to mention, there were two very nice articles, one in the Elwood City Ledger and one on ElwoodCity.org about a learning experience at Northside, so I'm gonna put some on the tables and you can pass them around if you'd like, and that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. Leslie?
I'm Leslie, part of the special ed administrator for the school district. We do have a new office of vocational rehabilitation worker, her name is Sunshine Humner, she's out of Newcastle, and she will work with any of our students, general education or special education with a disability, who will be graduating in May, so that information was sent out to parents, but if there are any students with significant medical issues or who have IEPs, we will be meeting specifically with her with our students with IEPs, which you will also meet with students with significant medical issues upon graduation. I am currently involved in the Lawrence County Suicide Prevention Coalition, on the table next to you guys in the back and also on the board table, there's cards. Human Service Center in Newcastle has received a grant and various community agencies in Lawrence County, school districts, law enforcement, mental health agencies are all working together to look at preventing suicide, both in youth and adults. We specifically, obviously, are working K through 12 on how to prevent suicide, and it also is going to become part of our standards next year in our discussions with students. So, we're in the process of that, if you have any questions, you can go ahead and pick up a flyer back there. There is a cyberbullying workshop, Saturday, November 15th, this coming Saturday, at the MIU4, for parents, it's free, any parent can go, again, there was a handout. Participants can learn about cyberbullying and the mechanisms for that, learning about various social medias as parents, you know, we need to be aware of what our kids are using and why, and then learning strategies to help monitor that social media. We have Careers Club here at Lincoln High School, they come in through Career Link, it is twice a month for general education and special education students who qualify for the services in the program. They work on study skills, they work on transition from high school into either college or job, and they work with students on interviewing skills, resume development, stuff of that sorts, so if your child comes home and asks about Careers Club, please let us know, we'd love for them to join. And then the last thing I have, we worked collaboratively with rural school districts, and we were one of six school districts across the state of Pennsylvania who were awarded a $41,000 grant for community-based competitive employment. So, we are working with various senior special education students on school to work with our community-based vocational training program, and working on not only students who are rich and are out so that they will graduate, but also helping students gain fully, become employed upon graduation, so we're really proud of that, and that was a huge thing for us.
Thank you, Leslie. I'd like to kind of now go into the school performance profile, I know that, they came out officially, finally, after a month delay or re-looking at data and so on, and I'd like to take this opportunity to finally go over the school performance profile with you, to kind of show you what they're talking about, and we'll let Mr. Labe, who's the only one here, all kind of talk about Perry and Hartman, and we'll talk about what happened with Northside also, what's part of their score. Again, the school performance profile is developed by PDE, it's an online resource designed to provide information, resources on school quality, and I kind of highlighted that word, and made it red for public schools across the Commonwealth. Again, depends on what you think quality is as far as schools, I think if you read the Ledger and the Council News, you kind of get my feeling on quality as far as the total experience that kids, you know, have in a school, which kind of is immeasurable. Again, this school performance profile is part of the second educator model, it is 15% of every person who pretty much is a professional employee in a school's evaluation now, so this 100 points, you know, this 107 possible points turns into 15 percentage points, and at the end of the, you know, when all this evaluation is done, we finally were able to evaluate our teaching staff from last year when these came out this year. So, it's not like the old days when we used to evaluate teachers at the end of the year in June, and they'd sign their evaluation and they'd be done, that evaluation carries on until you get your scores from the year before, especially that building level score and eventually teacher-specific data which is coming out. So, that's what we're talking about, that blue piece there, when we talk about building level score, it's 15% of their evaluation. What it is, as far as schools that are involved, every elementary and secondary school, charter schools, cyber charter schools, and CTCs get a score. How it adds up, 40% of the achievement is based on academic achievement, that's basically your percent proficient on the PSSAs and Keystone exams. If you are a CTC or have a BOAG program or some type of program in your school, you would also get those scores for the NOCTI test. Percent proficient on advanced PSSA grade three reading is a big piece of this, also as far as academic achievement, they're putting a real stress on that, and SAT, ACT, college-ready benchmarks. Another piece, 5% of the score is what they call closing the achievement gap. They have two pieces of this, one is on all students, and basically there's the explanation. For example, if a score gets 40% proficient on its biology test, there's 60% who aren't proficient. What they do is take half of that, which is 30%, and then over six years, you've gotta close that gap, so for that situation, it'd be 5% per year. That's called closing achievement gap for all students, and that's on every one of those tests, the math, reading, science, biology and writing. And then they also do it for what they call historically underperforming students, and there's a list of those students, those are students with an IEP, non-duplicated count, students with disabilities with IEPs, the ELL students, English language learners, and economically disadvantaged students. So, the same thing, they take historically scores for those students, where they scored, you have to cut it in half, and then you have to close that achievement gap over six years, and I'll kind of show you an example of that. The other big piece of this is growth in math, reading, science and writing, and there's still some piece of this that you still have to be added in, just, you know, for writing, for example, there is no writing test next year for 3 through 8, there's writing, I'm sorry, for 5 through 8, next year's writing is involved in the whole English language arts test, so they've gotta wait to get some data on that. So, they'll do growth score also, which is 40%, and then the last 10% is some other academic indicators, like your graduation rate, your promotion rate, your attendance rate, how students, if you offer advanced placement in all the areas, and the PSAT and planned participation, so that adds up to that 100%. They give you extra credit too, and that's basically how many students score advanced on those tests, on the AP test or even, excuse me, above a 3 or higher in the AP or advanced on the PSSA and Keystones. Northside, we'll talk about that real quick, Northside did not get, receive an SPP score this year, and I was, last year they did, this year they did, so I called PDE and I started inquiring, and eventually they got back to me, and it turns out that some rules changed with the way they test students. At Northside, we do have an autistic support classroom that has students that are older, 3 through, you know, that are in 3rd through 6th grade also, well, they take the PASA test, which is a Pennsylvania Alternative System Assessment, and then we've had that in the past, and what would happen in the past is those student's scores would get sent to their school of residence, so if they were really a Perry student, they were in 3rd grade, that test score would get sent to Perry, and would get added into their scores. Well, this past year, they changed the rules, and those schools, those scores now stay at the school where they're educated and not, they don't get attributed to their school of residence where they should be going. We don't have 11 as the number, the magic number is 11, to get any kind of academic score, we only had three or four students take it, so therefore we don't get any kind of achievement scores. That's why if there's no score for Northside, I'll kind of show you what that looks like when we go on. But I kind of bolded there, you know, but they do an outstanding job preparing our students for 3rd grade, 4th grade, and, you know, as they take that test and assessment, they're all part of that puzzle. And what's that do, teachers are evaluated using 100% of the observation and practice, they don't get really that 15%, kind of proposed a challenge with some of our specials teachers that traveled to Northside, so we had to figure that out, and it depends each year, we will have, you know, students tested in those grades, so it depends on the population of that class, so that's why Northside did not receive an SPP score this year. All right, we'll kind of take a look now at what, this is what the school performance profile webpage looks like, you can find it at PASchoolPerformance.org, you enter a site and you kind of tell who you are, and then you get to this map, you click on Lawrence County, just like before, you can look at any school in Lawrence County, any district, click on Elwood, and your four schools are listed. I'll just click on Northside to kind of show you that, it does give you the fast facts about, you know, Northside, you know, what grade level, enrollment, ethnic breakdown, percentage of economically disadvantaged, special ed and so on, but when you go to the academic performance, there's no data available, so that's what you can see for Northside. We'll go to Perry first, kind of go through their score, the fast fact sheet here, they just click on academic performance. Perry, obviously, was the highest elementary school in Lawrence County with a 90.7 of a possible 107. This is kind of a new graph here that they've added, you kind of click on that, it kind of shows you last year, this year, so it kind of gives you that trend data, and they do that for each one of the factors that come into play. These are the scores, basically, how they kind of rank you, obviously red is not very good, yellow, green, blue, and so on, but the more blue and, you know, green and light blues you see, the obviously the better the score. If you click on the actual link, it kind of tells you what they're looking for for that score, so this is just math scores, PSSA for 3rd and 4th grade. Here's one of the examples of closing achievement gap for all students, they did really well, and I'll kind of show you how that worked out, and it's only, again, only 5% of the So, the baseline year was last year, and they scored 86.9 on the science test in 4th grade. This year, they scored a 93.38, so the baseline year was 2013, recorded year is this year, this is the first year in that six-year cycle, the achievement gap between baseline year and 100%, so if you take this 86.9, you know, subtract it from 100, you get 13.10, you cut that in half, and that's, they have to close that gap in six years, so the first year, they would have had to have scored 1.09 higher, but they actually scored 6.49% higher, so they got the entire 100% of that score. So, that's kind of closing the achievement gap, they kind of show your entire calculation when you click on those, and so on. That's Perry, I mean, I'm not gonna go through the entire, you can click on the view calculation, it'll kind of show you the calculation, so the maximum's 100 on that, they got 86.92% proficient or advanced, times the factor, 6.52 out of a possible 7.5, so that's kind of how they just go through the whole thing, and it shows you at the end their score. Perry, obviously, did pretty well and improved from last year. I'll go to Hartman. Hartman dropped, it was last year at 89.9 and is now at 79.1, and you'll see some of the factors involved in that, obviously, reading literature, we had a, it's a yellow, it's not where we want it to be, and we'll work on those issues that we see there. Again, the ones with, you know, nothing there, it means like, obviously, there's no grade three at Hartman, so you're not gonna get a score, there's no NOCTI test, there's no SAT, closing achievement gap data for them, it doesn't come out till next year, so they don't include any of that. This is an area, I know Mr. Keeley's, you know, is concerned about growth numbers for math, is looking into that data, and we could break that data down in individual students once we get, you know, we look at PBOSS data, growth data for each individual student, but then you see, you know, 100% improvement in writing, you know, in growth in writing, so some good things there, some things we need to work on, and, you know, like I kind of told the paper, you know, this is only the second year for this, so trend data over years is, you know, what we would kind of look at, two years, we've got one high, one low, we got Perry, you know, kind of high and then higher, we start to see trends over periods of time, I think that gives us a little better idea of what we need to be looking at as far as achievement, but that's Hartman, and I'll click, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Labe here from Lincoln, if you wanna...
Go ahead and wait till my slides.
Okay.
Go ahead and do what you're gonna do now.
Here's Lincoln, pretty much very close, similar to where they were last year, 75.7, Science, biology, I know Mr. Labe will have talked about, you know, some of the things that they're working on with science and, you know, what they've done this year as far as that's concerned. Again, science and biology, the growth for the historically achieving students, they did well, closing the achievement gap for, you know, all students. So, we have to look at this data here, and also, reading and literature, PBOSS growth in math, so I know Mr. Labe has some things he's gonna talk to you about, and also this PSAT, which already occurred this year, so what I'll do is get back into the PowerPoint and talk about some things, first of all, with, that Mr. Keeley kind of talked about as far as what things they're working on. Historically, they've been, you know, targeting students, you know, for needs, you know, to improve, obviously Title I at ELA at Perry is a big, you know, part of that. We want to thank you for allowing us to, you know, hire another Title I aide, which we think will be a big piece of that, since our last Title I aide had to split time between Perry and Northside, now with some funding that we, you know, would use for a full-time Title I aide at Perry and one at Northside, that, you know, a person will be able to work with those students one-on-one, we have the reading and math tutors at Perry and Hartman, after-school deficit, you know, specific tutoring at Perry and Hartman for kids that, you know, can stay. Achievement has improved within a year, performance relative to the standard, you know, we're looking at the number of students that are, you know, proficient and advanced increases, and that's always good, using diagnostic tests to, you know, check our progress, I think I kind of told Mr. Poole this, that, you know, what's important too is not only this one snapshot, one time a year test that we get data, you know, a year later almost, you know, a long, you know, time after they take the test, that's that one snapshot, but again, we use a lot of diagnostic tests and benchmarking throughout the year to see how students are growing, to prepare them for these. So, what's more important, we look at that growth throughout the year or that one-time snapshot of students taking that high-stakes tests that we don't get results for for months later, and the kids are already into nine weeks, already into the school year, and we're looking at data from it. We look at performance relative to themselves, and I kind of mentioned this to Mr. Poole today, you know, I'm not here to compete with Riverside, that's not, I'm not here to compare ourselves to any other school that isn't just like us, that has a similar socioeconomics, you know, economically disadvantaged, same number of IEPs students, same size and same, you know, grade configurations. We'll look at schools that are like that, but we want our kids to compete against themselves to make themselves better, so that's what that growth measure does. Again, that long test, you know, time in between tests is an issue as far as, you know, we're concerned. Again, we've, kind of, you know, there's the numbers, achievement and growth are counted equally in SPP calculations, you know, should, you know, 40% each for those. Again, the math tutors, reading tutors in grades 3 and 4, 5 and 6, Title I ELA program, Mr. Keeley wanted, you know, to make sure we mentioned that we had a Tier 2 initiated class in 4th grade last year, and now it's in 3rd grade, and there's some positive results as far as those students, and so they expanded in the 3rd grade this year. Gotta make sure we mention that, you know, as per the PA Common Core Standards, PA Core Standards in Social Studies and Science are embedded with an ELA next this year, and so this year in 3rd through 6th grade, they're focusing on nonfiction reading in their science and social studies classes, because that's part of that ELA test now. There's not just a reading test or a writing test, it's English language arts, English language arts throughout the 3 through 8. They're using some... They're using some high-interest periodicals to enhance reading skills, story works, some nonfiction things to increase that reading interest. And the Google CS First Class, which we started after school for students who want to be part of that as far as programming, to help them with their math skills and reasoning skills. Curriculum, math teachers are adapting the PA Core standards, standards of mathematical practice, standards of math, improving depth of knowledge, you know, increasing that rigor because the test is going to increase this year as far as rigor. And again, reading, ELA, science, social studies, fiction, nonfiction, writing in grades three through six. Other issues, wanted me to make sure we mention this, that Perry has a considerable amount of resources. Hartman doesn't have the same luxury, but again, with your generosity and PTOs, they're getting some more Chromebooks, you know, very soon. They're in already, you just got to get them all set up. But again, those resources, again, you can individualize a lot of instruction with iPads and Chromebooks than you can possibly in Hartman right now, so that's all part of it. Also, the textbooks, which we kind of mentioned already, we're piloting two different textbooks aligned with the PA Core standards in grades K through six. Right now, the mathematics, I think the material's not properly aligned to shift the PA Core, but if you know what's going on right now with the PA Core, there's a lot of things going on as far as public input into it, and they're allowing public input and eligible content until January to give suggestions to maybe how it should change. So, really, you know, we're not even sure if that's going to be 100% yet, so we'll see what happens. And again, the impact is amplified as grade levels increase as far as students, if they're behind now in the third grade, they're going to be more behind in fourth, so we want to try to catch kids up the best we can. I'll turn it over to Mr. Lake.
First and foremost, the high school. I know the state came out with that website, the SVP website, for comparisons, but like Mr. Mancini said, and I know he told Mr. Poole, it's hard to compare if you're not comparing apples to apples. I know Mr. Poole has already said he's going to put a correction in, but if you read the ledger, said that the high school was sixth in Lawrence County, we're actually fourth in Lawrence County. Beaver County were fifth out of 15 in Lawrence County as far as the high school goes. We were fourth out of the nine districts, including the Lawrence County Career and Technology Center. But like Mr. Mancini said, are those schools same economic disadvantage, the same special ed population? Mr. Mancini put some time and effort into it this afternoon, and one positive that I like to brag a little bit about, he went through the whole state level as far as high school goes, that we're talking about building at seven through 12 with very similar economic disadvantaged students, which we have 42% at the high school, and it was only one school that scored higher than Lincoln High School in the state with those similar numbers. So, obviously, that was something that's feather in the teacher's cap, so I'd like to thank the teachers and the, and the students for putting such an effort. Because you've got to remember, this test, the only people that it truly affects as far as students are the ones taking the Keystone exams in the class of 2017. The ones that are currently in the class 2015, 16, that took the Keystone exams are taking it for nothing. So, put yourself in your, in being a 10th and 11th grade student and giving a standardized test with not being able to tell them that means anything. So, they have to obviously put forth the effort that's needed, and I attribute that to the teachers for emphasizing that to them. As far as what we've done at the high school, strategy to increase student achievement, we're in our third year for having more time for math and reading, seventh grade. We're in our second year for eighth grade for math, as far as Algebra I as well, and we're our first year for English 10 for literature, because they take that lit test with Keystone in 10th grade. We also started new remedial courses for Reading 8, Algebra B, and next year, there'll be remedial courses for Lit after we get those results. Mr. Cortez is always the first one to point out, and I totally agree with him, more mandates, less money to do so. And that's where you've heard me before, standing in front of you saying, do we have the staff to have these classes because the state's requiring us to have them? And that's where we have to take a look at the schedule and get creative. So, that's one thing that we've been able to do, is pull off more instructional time for those bosses. Changes, force that we've changed, one thing that you guys approved in the budget was to pay for every 10th and 11th grader to take the PSAT. I'm going to say it bluntly, you're talking about a moneymaker for college board, there it is. In that SVP number that Mr. Mancini showed you briefly, if you have, I think it's over 67%, maybe 70%, somewhere around that number, to even take, not score well, just take the PSAT, you get all the points in that area. Well, we've only ever offered it to sophomores, and parents had to pay for it on their own, and we've come up with maybe 40% take it. So, we've got penalized now on the SPP because we didn't have over 70% of our kids take it. Well, it's not part of our curriculum, we can't force the kids to do it. So, now, we've put forth the effort to pay that money for every sophomore and junior to take the PSAT. When I meet with the local Lawrence County principals, everybody has done that, because now it's a game that we play. So, we put that in our budget, we do that in October, they've already done that, so next year, when that score comes out in that category, we'll get 2.5 out of 2.5 instead of 1.4, I believe. That's the whole point you would add to your SPP. You're at 75.1, you'd be looking at 76.1. All right? That's something that has forced our hand there. And in result, it's going to help the students prepare, it's just the fact that it's a game that the college board and the state is playing with us. We have to look at P V O S data. I've taken the science teachers up to the IU last month, and we looked at P V O S. I've never had a science teacher look at that, that value-added growth. So, that's something new that we're doing at the high school, which is teachers' study island. We purchased study island for every student, grade seven through, well, actually, in the whole district, at the high school, seven through 12. So, that's one thing that we force as well, and then the classroom diagnostic tools exams. Curriculum issues that Mr. Mancini has already said, to Mr. Keeley is part of the program. Math teachers need to review the changes for the PA Core. I mentioned this last month to the community. If you're a non-math teacher, you're an ELA teacher. Whether you went to school for PE, art, it doesn't matter, science, social studies, you're considered an English, language arts teacher. And that's something that our teachers have taken the lead on, and we have to continue to emphasize that too. It's another fancy name for reading across the curriculum. We've also incorporated, incorporated our ICAN statements in all content areas, and that helps with our ELA standards. One thing we changed in science, Mr. Mancini had pointed out, our bio slash eighth-grade PSSA. If we looked at that data, I'd take bio out. Our bio score was really good. All right? Really good for our first-time bio test takers. Our eighth-grade PSSA science is something that we need to work on. The one thing, the second bullet, we've changed. Our seventh, eighth-grade classes have changed and restructured. Before, when science was given, it was never part of that AYP, that adequate yearly progress. So, there was never really a true emphasis on that eighth-grade science test. And, you know, I'll take the blame for that as being the instructional leader, but that's something that obviously now we have to take a look at and make sure our curriculum is aligned to the tested area. This will be the first year that I truly believe in seventh, eighth grade that we're aligned to that eighth-grade test. To prepare and help the bio even, if you're in ninth grade and you're in bio, obviously, you take the bio exam. If you're in ninth grade and not in bio, you should take physical science. Well, the physical science class in ninth grade is going very little for you to prepare for bio. So, we've almost taken that ninth-grade general science class and made it like a pre-bio, and we've called it ecology slash life science. So, we've changed a little bit of the curriculum, seventh, eighth, and ninth to lead up to that bio test. Challenges, no surprises here. That second bullet is probably the biggest challenge to teachers, is time. Some teachers would consider it to be four-letter work, which it is, but it's time, we still have it, and that's tough for us as administrators to create that time for them, to review data, review curriculum, get online with the test. That's a big one. The math text, like Mr. Mancini said, we have to make sure that it's aligned and the local content, and, you know, all things considered, that last statement, we were 75.7 last year, first year, 75.1 this year. One goal I told the teachers is, I never want to go backwards. We need to go backwards, we maintain. Do we grow? No. But the biggest difference, if you look at one year to the other, and we had a faculty meeting, and we went down through all the numbers, the teachers and the administrators, they're all relatively the same. The only one that we differed on this past year, and it was the reason why we weren't there, was our AP scores. The percentage of kids scoring three or above on the AP test, that's something that we didn't score well on this past year, and that was the difference. That's why we were, went from 75.7 to 75.1. But besides that, everything else stayed the same. So, all in all, good correlation, I think. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Lake. Again, we'll look at the data provided, but again, we'll take into account that it's a snapshot of what we do. We know we can improve in some areas, we'll try different interventions and different classes like Mr. Lake was talking about, and tutoring, and one-on-one, and looking at data. PSSA and Keystone were difficult, 2015 with the PA Core, so we've got to be prepared for that. We know scores will go down because every state that kind of implemented the PA, you know, the Common Core and took a test, their scores have gone down. So, you know, the data continues. I wish they would have stuck with their original plan years ago, was to implement the P, the Common Core in grades three, four, and five for a year first, and then implemented in grades six, seven, eight the following year and kind of ease it in, but they decided, they've made a big change, and they said, we're going three through eight all at once. So, we're looking at benchmark assessments and analyzing data, again, like Mr. Lake said, you know, the administration's meeting with staff and working with them in certain areas. So, the whole thing to me, if you've seen the movie Dead Poets Society, which is kind of one of my favorite movies, kind of like reminds me of how the textbook, you know, wanted to rate poetry in the Dead Poets Society, and how Mr. Keating felt about it. Oh, it's going to be that dark, I won't even play it, but, again, he talks about, you know, how textbooks are going to rate, you know, poetry, but, you know, he thinks it's hogwash because poetry is how you feel about it. It's not how you just rate it, you know, you just can't rate poetry. So, you know, how do you rate a school? You know, my comment was to also that, you know, where's the band? Where's the musical? Where's our social studies? Where's all our clubs and activities? Where's all the things that, you know, teachers are doing for kids, raising funds and, you know, the musical and the CS First Class and, you know, so we want it to be a whole experience, and that's my goal, is to make it a whole experience, but again, we're getting rated on some of these things that we do our best at. So, any comments, any questions? Anybody?
How, I got a question.
Yes.
How are the teachers as far as like the whole? I mean, are, do they seem like they individually know the kids enough to come up with their own plans to figure out where they need to be?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's something we've stressed for a long time, is differentiated instruction. To make it individual for every kid is very difficult, but I think with all the data that we kind of get, we can kind of group kids within the classrooms. I was in down in the Northside the other day, and they were working in stations, and, you know, so preparing those lessons for individual students is almost like one-on-one tutoring, but I think what you try to do is group them in similar levels, and you kind of hit those and teach one-on-one with a group, and the other kids are working. So, we've pushed, we've stressed a lot of differentiated instruction, and I think what technology helps, because you're able to, you know, have maybe five or six kids work on technology while maybe some other kids are doing something on the book, while five or six are also maybe one-on-one instruction. So, I think they've gotten that over the years.
I know, I mean, we've all, I've always heard really good things about the teachers of the, the grade schools. It's a lot of the high school teachers, I think, and I don't know if this was just from me going through school, I know a lot of things have changed, but, you know, you get a lot of slacking teachers that, you know, I just, does everybody seem on board in these schools much?
Oh, yeah. I mean, I think one of the things that's helped a lot is our advisory, for, you know, years ago, when I was principal, one of the things we did was we put every senior's name up on the wall. We gave every teacher like 12 stickers, and we said, go around the room and stick a sticker on any name that you could have a conversation with that kid without anything, but anything but school, for what's going on in their life. So, the teachers went around and put stickers on kids' names that they could have a conversation with. But there were some kids that didn't have stickers, or maybe had very few stickers. There are a lot of, some, a lot of kids had a lot of stickers. So, that kind of gave us an eye-opener of, hey, we need to really, you know, these teachers here might tell you, one of the first, you teach kids, you don't teach curriculum. Teach kids first, you teach curriculum second. I think the more we do of that, the more we get to know our students. High school's a little bit different animal, because they're rotating through classes, nine different periods, and, but, I mean, our teachers take care of our kids. That's, this is one of the things that they can tell you, they hear one thing from me, and that's concern, caring, tolerance. I stress that, you can ask these guys that are here, that if they haven't heard that from me, or, you know, they're going to hear that from me. You've got to have concern, you've got to have caring, you've got to have tolerance. And then after that, things will take care of themselves. So...
Mr. Grossman, that pie chart that Mr. Mancini put up there doesn't allow for what you possibly said, you know, years back. And it's no slam on years back, but the changes that have been made in that pie chart where 15% of the building level data, and that's the one thing I've emphasized, no matter what you're teaching, you're all part of this score. This isn't just on the math teacher, it's on the reading teachers, and on the science teacher.
Guys' councils.
Guys' councils get that, principals get that score. So, it's, everybody has a stake in it, and nobody can afford not to do the right thing.
I hope that answered your question. And we're always, I mean, they, that's my message, if they're not getting my message about, you know, that, then we'll have an issue. Yeah?
A lot of people have been coming up to me, parents, grandparents, saying, oh, I hate this Common Core, I hate, you know, a lot of math. You know, this Common Core math, I don't know how to help my son or daughter, what is different about it? Is it that different, or is it just?
It's a lot more rigorous. It has pushed levels of math down grade levels, where before, you know, you might have been learning a certain math in fourth grade, that might be being taught in second grade now, you know, or in fifth grade now, it's in third grade. So, it's pushed down levels of what kids need to know, and that's why I kind of said, I wish they would have eased into this instead of saying, here it is. We've been kind of preparing for it. I would agree with you. I know a lot of school districts have kind of gone around and sent, you know, done a resolution saying that they're against the PA Core or whatever. Pennsylvania kind of did it a little bit differently. They didn't adopt the entire Common Core. They went through a vetting process, and they eliminated some and changed the words, and they called it the PA Core. It's a lot more rigorous. I mean, there's no doubt about it, you can ask our math teachers, and, you know, it's tougher. I mean, it's a different way of thinking. They want kids to sweat, they want them to sweat. That's one of those mathematical standards, practices, they want kids to like sweat through, and, because that's how they're going to learn it. And teachers need, you know, we've talked about how to teach to those new standards, and it's going to take some time. I mean, there's no doubt, schools are, I mean, we're all in this together right now. So, it's definitely more rigorous. You're probably not going to know as a parent or grandparent what they're doing, as far as how they're getting to those answers, and so on, because that's what they're looking for. They're looking for the process and how they're getting to those, and there's no doubt, it's tough.
My son's in seventh grade, and I dread, when he comes to me asking for help on math because, there are...
Like the old modern math.
Oh, I don't know what they call it, but it's awful. I dread it because I don't know the answer, I don't master the very finals.
Well, I mean, it's funny, because, I mean, we can, it's, I mean, it's, come, you know, April 2015, that's going to be the test. I mean, so we can't sit around and say, okay, we're not doing that, because when they get the questions, we've got to make sure they're prepared for that, so they aren't sweating on that test.
So, what, Laurel that did...
Laurel did one, I think, Wilmington also.
What does that do to that?
Yeah, like I kind of said, was, you can make that statement, but come April, that test is going to be like that. So, I think the more they get, like PDCs that, and it will be interesting, like we said, the scores, it'll be interesting to see how the scores, what happens to them. Traditionally, Kentucky and New York City, they all have gone to these Common Core tests, and their scores have dropped. But just like when the first PSSAs came out, all the test scores were low, and then schools learned how to eligible content and teaching, and then, you know, work on students and the differentiating instruction, and then over time, they increased. So, hopefully, that's... and then over time, they increased. So, hopefully, that's what's gonna happen. You're, you know, right now, our textbooks and math aren't completely aligned to the, you know, PA Core. But right now, like I said, is, they are taking all kinds of public input till the middle of January on eligible content. And they're asking teachers to log into this website, and why isn't this a good standard? You know, what's wrong with this eligible content? Should this be broken up into two different standards instead of one? What's your reasoning? So, they're taking all kinds of public comment on it, and we'll see. I mean, I know it's, every email I get from the state, or, you know, from different magazines, district administrator and stuff, there's a lot of resentment against the, you know, the Common Core. So, but it's what we've been handed.
Mr. Newport, when we talk about Study Island, and we made that purchase for, you know, the whole district, that was a big step, because like Mr. Mancini said, until you catch up, I mean, unless you wanna just go out on a limb and spend three hundred thousand dollars on all the textbooks just for one content, I'm not talking to everything. You know, our math might not be totally there, but that Study Island program that we have, that's aligned. So, our students in three through twelve are taking benchmarks in there. And then there's also lessons where a math teacher in eighth grade, like Mr. Stanley, for instance, can grab off a lesson on, I'm gonna say, Fettering Theorem. Rip off a lesson, something that they can do at home, because every student has a login. So, you can do that a couple different ways. Print off a lesson, have a handout, supplement the textbook. You can make kids do it at home, and then he checks their results. That Study Island is pretty slick. I mean, I hate saying this, but it could come to the point where that's your text, because that's the content that Mr. Mancini said will be tested come April. So, we use that now for bio, lit, algebra, seventh grade math, seventh grade reading, eighth grade math, eighth grade reading. We use that a lot constantly. That's another part of having technology that works in the school to allow every kid to do it. So...
Yes, ma'am.
You've mentioned that, I heard that you said you use CDT tests. What other kind of diagnostic testing do you use for the lower grades? I know that you said from seven to twelve, they use the CDTs, and they use the Study Island to assist. What other assessments are you using? And is Study Island offered and used in the lower grades as well?
It is. We have Educational City, which is a sister company. It's made by Study Island. It's just developmentally appropriate for K one and two. We have, we use ReNaturally as a diagnostic tool. We have something called Wilson's Foundations that we use. We do have RTII facilitators who meet with our lowest five percent. And we also do Tier one and two with our classroom teachers at least once a week. We break kids down. And we do progress monitoring, either live or... Ames Web testing. That's our universal screener, Ames Web for reading and math.
And then I've heard a lot, now I'm new to the district, so I heard a lot about remediation, but what of enrichment? We have to show increase in growth every year, so what are you doing for the advanced and proficient students?
And that's something we need to work on.
Right now, the true enrichment that they get is through a gifted IEP. When we meet as a team, if that student qualifies for a GIEP, that team comes up and we meet with those teachers that have those GIEP students, and we'll offer enrichment through classes. That's pretty much, though, like Mr. Mancini says, at this point, it's the extent of it. Because before, the game was get those bubble kids to be proficient or advanced, right? Achievement, not based on growth. So, that game's changed, and that's why we're taking teachers to learn about PVAS and the whole deal. So, it's a definite thing that we have to continue to work on.
And that gifted group is a very tiny portion of the children.
Correct. Yep, you're right.
But also, starting in elementary, K to two, we differentiate. And within the classrooms, all of our centers, most of our centers are differentiated, and they're placed in flexible grouping. So, if a child is super high in math, but maybe not as high in reading, they're in a different group for, to challenge them. We also, in our RTI, at least, at least once a week, if not twice a week, within their triad, a group of three teachers will pull out the top, the highest students, and they will be given things that are much more rigorous to work on and challenging with the support of that teacher.
Just to add to your question about how the math is different, as a parent of a third grader, and my kid is a smart third grader, she's not a genius, but she's a smart kid, math at a third grade level is algebra. It's not fifty-nine minus thirty-two. It's, well, fifty-nine is about sixty, minus about thirty. And then, don't forget that you just added more numbers. It's not simple math. And the problem isn't that you're teaching a different concept. The problem is that kids at that age get so frustrated and fed up, and they, there are kids that take hours to do a simple math sheet, and these are smart kids. And when you're turning kids off at a young age to math, so in third grade, it's like, "I hate math. I hate it, I hate it, I hate it." That's the biggest problem, because then it only gets harder. And when you're, when you're making it that difficult at that level, you're not helping the kid get excited about math and wanna learn more about math. You're just shutting them off like that, and it's, that's it. You have harder questions. And especially as a, as a college-educated parent, some of the questions, I have to be quiet and not say, "Well, this is stupid," because it really is. I mean, you either have this money or you don't. You know, the bank doesn't estimate, you know, the IRS doesn't estimate. It's, and there is no right or wrong answer. And there'll be math questions that say, "Well, what are your opinion?" Well, last, when we were kids, math wasn't your opinion. That's math. And so, that's, that's why it's so difficult, and why so many parents especially struggle with it, because that's how math was.
Very well said. I agree. I mean, when I spend all day doing accounting, which Rich would appreciate to get it down to the penny, and then I help him do his homework, and it's about or rounding to the nearest whatever, and it's amazing.
Yes, Mr. Newport?
Mr. Lake, you more comfortable performing profile measuring?
Am I more comfortable?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm an expert, but I looked at it, yeah.
Not close to the old standards. I mean, the reason I'm saying...
The old AYP, just one test, no, they've added some, you know, they've added graduation and growth, things like that. That's different. Promotion rates, attendance rates.
Be more comprehensive.
It's still, but eighty percent of it's still based on that test.
I understand that.
It's better. It's better than it was. Yeah, there's no doubt.
Well, what I'm saying is, it's, you guys are the experts. It appears that with the information, we can be more focused on where we need to be.
Oh, there's no doubt. There's a lot of data, a lot of data than there used to be. Before, you just looked at the test, and that was it. Now, there's all kinds of pieces. So, short.
Until we want the PVAS is the growth.
The growth? You got, we have some...
Sure.
It's just, what they do is they measure, when the students start taking the test in third grade, reading and math, you got two data points. They take, fourth grade, they take reading, math, and science. Now, you got five. Fifth grade, they take reading, math, writing. So, you add up all these data points. Well, each time, they, so in third grade, the kids take the test for the first time. They base it on those two projections, those two data points, where that student should be, and what they should score in fourth grade. And then they take all those data points from third grade, fourth grade, and then they project where that student should score in fifth grade. And they take, so they keep adding all those data points, and through some math calculation, they have a projection for every student. And if that student meets that projection, you know, then they're, they met a year's worth of growth. If they don't meet that year's worth of growth, then it's a negative, you know, score for that teacher. And if they excel above, then it's positive. So, PVAS is a whole different category of it, but it's a lot of data points. And then by the time they get into eighth, ninth, you know, are taking the Algebra One test, they're looking at a whole three through eighth grade test data points, and they project where they should be on math. And they use science and reading and writing for that also. They put all those data points in there. And so, teachers can look at those projections on PVAS. We've given them, you know, logins, they go in. Okay, Johnny's supposed to be here, they're supposed to be here. And it's a projection where that student's supposed to be, and they should meet that. That's where they would make a, you know, year's worth of growth, they call it. So, it's a calculation that I can't do, but we get the results. So...
Good answer, Mr. Lake.
Yeah. That's for every student. That's every gifted, IEP, you know, they do it for all. So...
Maybe we don't have to say for math.
Any other comments or questions? Yes, oh, I'm sorry.
As we were talking, or in the discussion about growth for those who are underachieving and those who are proficient, advanced, or enrichment, if I had to throw in as a teacher, you know, something to say, it's very hard to reach every individual student, that is the goal. And we are very grateful that the board has helped us out, get some Chromebooks at Hartman. But something that, that would help along those lines is, if we were able to get more technology at Hartman with the Chromebooks specifically. There's this application out there called Google Play for Education, where as a teacher, I could push out individualized apps for students, for those who are having difficulty here, those who need enrichment here. And that is differentiated instruction right there. But when you only have thirty Chromebooks to share amongst a grade level, it's very difficult to do. And I'm just, I'm not trying to, how should I say, push technology, but just to open your eyes as to what technology could possibly do for the students in the area that we need to do it.
Right.
Mr. Deloya, how many Chromebooks do you need?
Ideally, it would be a one-to-one situation. That's ideal, you know. If we could have, right now, on order, I believe, is one cart per floor, which is thirty per grade level. It'd be nice to even have two or three carts per grade level that, you know, we've got six classes. If a cart could be shared between two, you know, ultimately, you're one-to-one. But if you can't be there, get as close as you can. And, you know, we have set aside a time at Hartman at the end of the day for small group instruction, individualized tutoring sessions, about a twenty-five minute period. And, you know, if you could get that in place to implement during that time period, you know, when you're teaching the masses, you send it all out at once, and then you see what happens when you deliver the mass instruction. This group over here got it, they can take it, they can do whatever. This group over here, they need remediation, need the extra work. So, if you had that kind of technology, I can go, you know, boom, 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 boom. One me can do all that, instead of trying to think, "How am I gonna do one me with here, here, here?" I can't. So, that's, that's the scenario.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can, can some of those things be printed out from this Google Play?
No.
I mean, I know it's ultimately, but you can't print from there and take anything from them.
No. It's not like a website that you could click, print out a worksheet. It's not that. It's an interactive program. So...
Study Island is?
Sort of, yeah.
Okay. Because I haven't seen Google Play, but I know Study Island.
What if kids had their own Chromebook at home? Would they be able to bring it up to school and use it?
I'm not gonna touch that one with a ten feet over.
In high school, they would. No, not.
Yeah, we have, we have free laptops.
No, no, not laptops.
The Chromebooks.
With devices.
Devices, yeah.
The laptops, they don't want it off.
Off limits, yeah.
Right now.
I think that has to do with the securing the network and all that jazz, and that's Mrs. Rucker's baby, so you go ahead, press that one right there.
That's a whole bit. They, they're not, wouldn't be compatible or...
Well, they would be. It's just that you gotta, they have to register every device. They gotta bring it to Mrs. Rucker. She has to register it, you know.
They have to walk in and out. So, the one kid, they're on their network and everything's safe. All they have to do is flip a few things, and they're doing what they want.
So, that's one of the...
Yeah, that's maybe not a good idea.
Sorry, to me, it took a little bit long there, but thought that was important as far as where we are. Well, yes.
First question about our gifted program. I believe our gifted program certainly isn't where we wanted to be, because we do a very good job with our resources that we have.
Right.
Under the coming down of American education, there's no doubt left behind. There are no rewards. There are no rewards for achieving. There's only penalties for not making the mark of bringing every student to a certain standard, some of which may actually, professional educators will tell you are goals that are not just highly unlikely, some are even impossible to meet. Those, and in order to do that, not suffer penalties, that takes up a lot of resources. Perhaps in the future, we can expand more, but we do a very good job for the resources we have.
And with one that controls the whole district. So, yes.
I can kind of speak to that, too. I was part of the gifted enrichment program, and anytime I've sat down with the gifted instructor, the administrative administrators, the IEPs, they do a great job in fitting that to what you want as a student and what the parents want for their child as well. And if you're a part of that program, I was involved in upper-level classes, like if I was in ninth grade, I think tenth grade classes, things like that. So, they do a good job for the resources that we have, like Mr. Cortez said.
Thank you, Mr. Cortez. Okay, Mr. Newport, ready to go. I'm sorry, just went over to Mr. Zeron.
I'd like to start on the communicator update that went out on Friday. Those are all revenue and finance. Personally, it's the cafeteria point-of-sale software. You may recall, we budgeted approximately sixty-eight hundred dollars for hardware upgrades in the cafeteria. Turns out that Alan Rucker has been able to do some things for us, and we don't necessarily have to replace any hardware this year. What we would like to do, having foreconsidered, there's a point-of-sale software out there that is used predominantly. It's called QSP Software. It's a point-of-sale software that, that's been used for years and years and years. The software we currently have is ten years old. There's been no updates to it. And a company recently bought it that really is in the credit card business. So, they've not been able to really support the software the way we need it supported. So, what we're suggesting is that we use the sixty-eight hundred dollars that was for hardware to allow us to buy the software. And we would bring it in and run it parallel to what we're currently doing. Once our staff are comfortable with it, then we could go ahead and transition. That would make it much easier for Mr. Cromer to do his month-end stuff, as well as I know that I'd be getting much more credible information as far as the claims that I have to make to the department of that. So, that's what we'd like to do. I don't know if the board has any feelings on it or questions that I might be able to answer, or whether that's okay.
I haven't had an experience with the current software. I had a parent come to me complaining because his high school-based daughter was refused to meal, or refused to eat dinner or lunch, because she didn't have any money in her account. And, and they threw her food away that day that she had already selected.
We try not to have that happen. I think Mr. Cromer's made it pretty clear he doesn't want that to occur.
Well, what I'm thinking, the reason it happened was because after being warned on six days that you're out of money, you don't have any money, or allowing you to go up to eight dollars or whatever the figure was, and then finally, they had to refuse her. And the reason they had to throw away her food was a state law, because she may have touched it.
Right.
So, it had to be thrown away. Well, that goes to wasting food, which is kind of a fucking me. But this, if the parents can go online, now, when I went back to the parent and said, "This basically is your daughter's fault, why this happened," and of course, and he went all over her, and they got the matter straightened out. But if a parent can go online, kid tells a parent, tells a parent, there's no reason for them to...
That's a good point that you have to make. This software actually includes that online purchasing.
So, a parent could go online with a credit card, put money on the account, as opposed to having a kid come in and not turn it over to the cafeteria staff, use it for some bargains.
Give some to the cafeteria, keep some.
Yeah.
So, I've researched...
That's why I'm on her checks.
So, I do have some information. I'm working with Mrs. Rucker to make sure that she has the hardware to support this, but that's what we'd like to work with. The second item under the update is we have a property that has been, a bid has been placed upon. It's currently sitting in repository. That's a property that's gone through upside sales and judicial sales, has failed to sell. So, we received a bid of seven hundred and fifty dollars for a piece of property out in Elkhorn, and we're suggesting that the board consider taking it, because once it is taken out of the repository, it's put back on the app and back to roll, and starts to generate revenue for this school district. So, that would be on the agenda for Thursday. The check register, we did mail out an update on Friday. I do have additional checks to print today, and I'll get those to you before you leave, so you have the opportunity to review them before Thursday, when you're asked to vote on them. Back to the regular agenda, the first agenda that went out. We'll have our regular monthly reports for October available. On the agenda will be the homestead, farmstead application for every taxpayer out there that has not had a approved homestead, farmstead application... For every taxpayer out there that has not had an approved homestead, farmstead application approved by the county assessor's office, by law, we are required to send out a new application each year by December thirty-first, if it is. They then have until March first to complete the application and return. We're suggesting we use InvoCon Corporation again, which is what we consistently have done the last couple of years. The pricing did go up about a total of sixty-three dollars for this year's application. So we'll have that on the agenda for your consideration Thursday. The IU fair share agreement, various school districts who want IU four host intermediate unit classes, so we have kids coming in from other districts into our school district, and we charge those districts as out, incoming districts a fair share charge. In the past, it had been approximately, actually been three thousand dollars for a kid. The problem was, is that Lawrence County was charging three thousand, Butler and Mercer were charging something different, which was much less, and there was a lot of back-and-forth about why can't the rate be the same. So a lot of complaining happened, and we did get together as a full intermediate unit, put together a fair share agreement, that's going to be calculated every three years, and it's based on the average overhead of all the various schools. This year, it'll be sixteen-hundred dollars for the fourteen-fifteen school year for kids coming in from other districts that are being hosted here in Elwood City, twice in bars and other school districts. Item number four, we have a tax refund request, received from James Wery. This was for an overpayment amount of seven-hundred-and-forty-five dollars and twenty cents of cost interest. A lot of times, what happens is the individual taxpayer makes the payment, and the mortgage company makes the payment as well, so we refund the money to the taxpayer. My second refund request did come in today, late in the day, it's from Dennis and Catherine Young. This is a refund for a property that was raised. They actually paid the taxes on it, although it didn't exist when they did pay the taxes. So we'll do a calculation and put a refund request on Thursday. You know, last but not least, under revenue and finance, it is time to start looking at the budget. The last couple of years, the district has done Act One budget, which means it's an early budget. You could adopt something preliminary in January, and then go through the process after that. The Act One budget allows you to apply for exceptions, which means that you potentially could consider a tax increase beyond the inflation index. So it would be the inflation index plus a few exceptions. The alternative to that is the regular time line budget, where you're limited to a tax increase to the index, which I think is about two-point-eight percent this year, which is close to half the mill for the district. So I'm kind of looking for direction, whether the board wants to go forward. Act One, it gives a little more flexibility, whether you're comfortable with just the traditional budget cycle.
How much money is the half mill again?
I have been able to generate about two-hundred thousand dollars.
In the last several years, we've got more.
Like peanuts, she was like peanuts.
The Act One gives the board more flexibility. And that's really what the board, personally, would say, I can not do that, but...
I agree.
And then I think I've also mentioned that when I do that Act One budget, it's, it's on a whole lot of information I don't have. So for example, with the governor being elected, this year, his budget won't come out until March, so our board will be approving the budget in January, based on my best guess, this is what it comes down to. So, but again, it does provide more flexibility when you get to April, and you see how it is going to go. Feelings of the board, is everybody okay with the Act One?
That's what we did last year.
The other thing I wanted to mention is that we have completed our audit, had another good year. A large part of that had to do with us getting close to seven-hundred thousand dollars back from the Midwest Comline, the fund balance that we had built up in that consortium. So we'll get to another agenda item a little bit later, which would be chiller. The chiller, we'd like to have the board consider maybe replacing that for us. So what I'd like to do to finish the audit, we have a surplus of approximately eight-hundred thousand dollars, so I'd like to suggest that you put six-hundred-and-fifty to the Cal Reserve Fund, which will pay for a like-for-like chiller replacement. Well, it's something you have to do, it's something that the chiller is thirty years old, we put money into it each and every year as far as replacement, or repairs go. So given that we've had the benefit of a good year, we'd like to see if we'll consider doing that. Again, we can get that a little bit later, but to complete my audit, that's kind of, I need that direction, so you can tell me so I can go back with the audit and talk about it. Steve, any comments on the chiller? We'll get to the chiller.
Let's wait.
So we have a discussion on the chiller, and we'll get back to this, or whether you want to talk about this now, very early.
Doesn't matter to me, really, I just said...
Well, since we're talking about it, Steve wants me to like that.
Well, we're really not sure where we're going to go with this chiller to begin with. We have a lot of good ideas where we want to go, but nothing's in stone until we talk to more people. We're kind of like just starting to dribble the ball on it. We need to inquire more about the size of the chiller versus, do we want to cool the auditorium full-time, do we not want to cool the auditorium full-time? And these are things that you guys are going to have to discuss, because we don't have that many events in the auditorium where, you know, how much money do we want to spend for, you know, things like that? If we don't want to attack it now, and we just want to buy a chiller, do we buy a chiller big enough to do that at a later time? Or do we just replace it, like Rich said, for what we have, and, you know, apples to apples? You know, so there's a lot more goes into it than what we're ready to give you answers to, but Rich kind of felt that we should get the ball on the table here and let you, you know, know what we're thinking of doing, because we're definitely going to have to do something. You know, we can't, we can't stay with this chiller. This chiller is scrap.
Well, the difference between replacing a like-for-like, which is approximately six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, and a larger chiller that would simultaneously intercore any auditorium, that, that costs approximately eight-hundred thousand dollars. We check, we use that auditorium about ten days a year, where the heat would be an issue. So now I'm suggesting six-fifty to go to the Cal Reserve, because that gets you like-for-like. If as we went down the road, you decided you wanted to go to a larger chiller, you could use fund balance to fund that. But again, I need some direction at this point, so I can complete the audit and get that.
I think what currently, what probably need to know is that when we need to cool the auditorium, correct me if I'm wrong, we need to shut down the inner core, so that, well, like, so if we're having graduation, Mr. Lake says, hey, Steve, let's shut down the inner core this day, because we need the air to go into the auditorium, so it cools the auditorium down, and the inner core, you know, the rooms get hot in there, so that's what kind of happens now. It's kind of like a valve, you switch over, and so that's what a like-for-like would be still. It would still be, it wouldn't cool both all the time, it would cool the inner core, and then when they needed cool for the auditorium, if there's an event, flip it over, so...
How long does it take to cool down that auditorium?
We started about eight o'clock in the morning for an eight o'clock in the evening festivity.
As soon as the doors open in Sorelli, it's going to make a difference.
It goes right out. Yeah, I didn't even know there was air conditioning in there.
See, that might not just be the chiller, that was my point that I was trying to make. We're feeding this chiller with a really antique air handler. And my question is that I didn't get to ask the engineers with this project is, is this air handler capable of giving us more air if we get a bigger chiller? And I don't know that answer, you know. And if, and if we're not going to chill the air in the auditorium, then we don't have to worry about that. But if someday down the road, we're going to want an auditorium where you guys are sitting there on graduation night and be nice and comfortable in your gowns, then we need to look a little more harder into it, and that's still the thing I'm saying. But I don't know if we have the time, because Rich needs the answers now, you know, so...
Yeah, I need some direction on that.
Right.
I'll be forward, but again, if you, you put a six-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollar figure in, and you decide you want to do more, you do have the money set aside.
I would say a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars is not worth an hour and a half of graduation time. To me, I don't think it's worth cooling down that auditorium all day, every day.
The doors are propping open anyway.
Right. Because like, once the door's open, like, yeah, it's, it gets hot in there, you know.
Right. Is there any alternative to chiller? Do we have to just replace it with another chiller? Is there another way of cooling the building down?
No, we have to have a chiller.
It has to be that, because of the way the structure is, because of power.
Right.
Okay, there's no other method of, of doing it?
There's no windows in the inner core, you can't put any window units. We're talking about the library, we're talking, on the first floor, you've got about seven classrooms, on the second floor, you're talking three or four, plus the library.
I didn't know if there was another, a different source, not necessarily a chiller, if we could put something more efficient, energy-efficient in for long-term, you know what I'm saying? I don't, I know, you know, there's all this geothermal and all this stuff out there, but I don't know what the building actually has capability of being, you know, redone, or, you know, the vents and so on.
Right. Well, we have an engineering group looking into it also, you know. And we're not going to just jump into this because of the amount of money, but, but it's going to be roughly what we're talking about, no matter what you have to go.
We'll get you additional information. Steve did miss the meeting with the architect and engineer, he was out of town, so there was some questions to be answered, but I wanted to get it from the board, you know, governor, see kind of what's coming.
All right, thanks, Mr. Zeron. Personnel and education are second question items, so now bring us to properties and transportation. Okay. You see Magic Softball Program requests use of the High School Boys' Girls Gym for practice starting Saturday evenings, December two thousand and fourteen, January, February two thousand and fifteen, from five to eight. Be looking for approval of that. Elwood City Basketball Boosters request permission for use of the boys' gym for their annual tip-off tournament, December fifth, and Saturday, December sixth. The game is scheduled for six and eight P.M. each night. Western Pennsylvania Gasoline Diesel Fuel Consortium.
This is a consortium we've been involved with for several years, I have the Allegheny County IU, a whole bunch of schools get together, and we bid out our gasoline and diesel fuel in large quantities, so hopefully we get a better price. Price of gasoline and diesel fuel is down right now, so they're hoping to go out and lock in. So what I'm hoping to do on Thursday is have the board authorization, participation in this consortium again. The agreement also calls for them to be our agent, allowing them to go ahead and lock for us. So again, we've had some success over the years, it's worked out real well. Elwood City Transit is quite satisfied with it as well. And I work with them to determine the quantities that we're going to buy on a monthly basis. So we'll have that agreement for the board on Thursday. The IU Joint Purchasing Cooperative, which will also be mine, is we work with, again, the twenty-seven schools of IU four, with all of our supplies, paper, pencils, together, we bid them out, the pricing that comes in, because of the economies of scales and quantities that comes into head. Occasionally, I do run into problems with quality, because it's a price-type thing, and we try to watch that as closely as we can. There's a two-point-three percent fee, which is approximately thirteen-hundred dollars for us to participate, but for me, to have my staff go through bidding all this out, bringing in and evaluating, would cost me on thirteen-hundred dollars. And then last but not least, and I'll turn it back over to Mr. McEen, parents, Kevin Blake and Man Dean have asked for a parent transportation contract to take their child to Bay County Chapel. I've not received the information yet, so I'm not really sure what the amounts are. If I receive that through Thursday, we'll have a transportation contract available for your consideration. If not, we'll bring it to you this afternoon.
Rich, what is the Bay County Chapel?
It's a preschool program. Or a kindergarten program.
It's a preschool program.
Preschool, or...
Why would we pay for a preschool program?
We are paying for transportation to the preschool program.
Are we responsible for preschool?
Why, since when are we responsible for preschool?
You're responsible for preschool transportation if this student has an IP.
Does that make sense?
We have to...
Yeah.
IP is a factor for... Vans cameras, Elwood City Transit is proposing that cameras be added to the various vans that it runs, costing equally between the district and the transit company. Estimated cost to be thirty-five, seventy-five. When we originally put the cameras on, we, the contractors originally said buses, but we've had some incidents on the vans that they drive to various locations, and I thought, I had a conversation with Josh, and said, hey, we should need to get cameras and sound recording on the vans also, so that would be the cost for, I think there's nine vans that they would need to equip with a camera and sound, so...
Are we allowed to record sound?
Yes, yep. That's a new policy we passed last year.
Would that make your life a little easier with the bus problems?
Absolutely, especially on the vans, I mean, yeah, so, yep.
Do you think they'd be worth it, like, to be here?
You can, yes.
Oh, yeah. We have them on our vans, the three vans that we have, we have them on our vans, and they're, we've used them, we've had to use them, so just to record and sound, they have a little chip we put in the computer, and we can hear and see what's going on, so...
How well do the buses, the audio systems work? Like, I know it'll get in the back of the bus, in the front of the bus, but what about like the middle of the bus?
It's always a crapshoot. I mean, that's, depends on the noise level, and so, um, just hoping to hear, but sometimes you can catch some things. Sometimes you can't. If they yell stuff really loud, obviously you can't, but if they're whispering stuff, you're not going to hear it. Chiller project, we talked about cafeteria dishwasher, through contacts with Mets and Mr. Cromer, they've identified a company that made repairs to the Lincoln dishwasher, I think I gave you that update, to reach its mandated temperatures for cleaning and rinsing. Mr. Schuster and Mr. Cromer will monitor it for several months to make sure that it's, you know, at that same temperature. He will also, Mr. Cromer will be also preparing a cost-benefit analysis in regards to transitioning to plastic dinnerware and silverware. From that, the ability of the dishwasher to handle the additional load will be considered as an analysis. So going back to trays and, so that may be an issue with the current one, if it can't handle that, so Mr. Cromer will be putting together a cost analysis for that. Feasibility, feasibility study, HHSDR submitted a proposal to conduct a feasibility study to provide options for the board, a cost of nineteen thousand dollars plus reimbursement for printing and copying. The board elects to implement a certain improvements in facilities, HHSDR serving it as the architect. Study fee will be refunded in full, and the copy of the proposal will close for your consideration. That's what that document was that you had. Any comments? Okay, to the board?
I mean, I think that was, it was a reasonable amount of money, from what I saw, and it said after they reimbursed us, if we used any of the plans.
But my thing is that if we're going to be spending this nineteen thousand dollars for a feasibility study just to close down Perry School, we're not going to get that reimbursement back. That's a fuck.
Yeah, this study, I think, was a comprehensive study on all kinds of different options, and if they were to...
Not just for Perry.
Not just for Perry. And I kind of told them that, I said, you know, let's not, kind of look at it, let's look at, the district, where, like, in two thousand and five, they did a study and came up with nine or ten plans, if you remember, those are the members that were here, of different options, and I think it's going to kind of be a similar study to that. You know, what if you were to knock down Perry and build a middle school? How much would it cost? And, you know, here's what your options are, kind of include all the options visionary down the road, and not just closing Perry and moving kids, so...
Remodeling Perry.
Remodeling it, sure.
Right, adding on to Perry, that's, you know, changing how we redo it. I mean, they're going to do all the work for it.
Thank you. Once you see the information, it's up to you to, and, and, just, an idea of plan for two...
Then we think about, do we have the money to do those plans?
Well...
To make those improvements to the facilities?
Yeah.
You know, that's, that's, that's the bigger question, is my answer.
They're going to give us a report, we're going to pay twenty thousand bucks to see a bunch of great ideas, we can't afford everything.
Yeah, but at least we'll see the great ideas.
We have to, we have to look for some, we have to start planning somewhere, we have to have some kind of things. I mean, I'd like to think that things are going to get better and not worse. I know that our pension crisis is not going away, but I still have grand plans for the district and hopeful that things are going to get better, that we will be able to do these things. And it might not be in two years, but it may be in five years, but we still need to have a plan, a vision.
So as a reimbursement, how long does that last?
I think that what they probably did, was, you move forward, because the project that's here appears on.
That's awesome. I just felt, oh, like, yes, more air.
The chiller.
What's, what's the consensus here?
I'll take her. I think we need to take a long look at it. It's $19,000, that's a lot of money, I'll grant you. But if it comes up with something that angles or do, that extends into the district, maybe one or three or four years with $19,000 plus. You don't get anything for any, there's no free lunch.
I don't know. I mean, a lot of, I know Perry isn't the best because it's, you know, apartment and your side are brand new, but I'd like to see what they have to say about remodeling, not necessarily leveling it. It may be far cheaper for us to do something like that, although remodeling can be even more expensive. That's why we need to see all the plans.
Plan ahead, we can level it and build a new.
Exactly, with the middle school, it's crazy.
Middle school.
Exactly.
Take your reimbursement for a big construction.
For December.
Right now, thirty days, we're not a professional.
I can't.
It's their way behind too.
Yeah.
Right.
Yes. They could retire to the 10th one.
For those things, we all, we have to know.
All right, Matt, what do you think?
Well, like I said, I don't know if we're going to have the money and capability of making these improvements. But if the consensus is the Board will be along with it, then I'll, then I'll go along with it as well. But I just don't see much light at the end of the tunnel right now to be able to be part of my decision, I guess. But I'm up, I'm up here.
I agree with Matt 100%. Do we have the $20,000 to spend on this?
It's going to be up and down, so I'm sure we can find some, some.
I just love tapping into that one gentleman.
The man is in favor of it for sure, Jordan. Yeah, Leroy?
Yeah, I, I understand the realities of our financial situation. I also like to think that it's not always going to be that way. And we can tap into the fund balance, it's a non-division budget. It's a very small percentage of investment. So, yeah.
We have the consensus down.
Student Affairs, field trips. Jonathan Walters, gifted teacher, and Aaron Parkinson request permission to take 24 to 36 students in grades seven through 12. There's a great book race reading competition at West Middlesex on December 14th. They believe in 1:15 and return at 9:00 p.m. And this is Michelle Hall, transition, transition teacher, request permission to take two transition students by school band at the Commonwealth Technical Institute in Johnstown, PA for a tour of the campus and review the associate diploma degree programs offered on Thursday, December 11th. They'll depart at 7:45 and return approximately 3:15. Student Assistance Program, a letter of agreement has been submitted by the Human Services Center providing the following services. Fourteen representatives, mental health assessments, consultation in staff and faculty education. Services are provided with grant funds. There are no costs of the district, district providing it, the district stays in compliance with the state student assistance program guidelines. New policy, the administration recommends Policy 625 for procurement cards be approved. Policy has been on display since October and will be recommended for adoption at the regular meeting. A new club proposal closes information for Mr. Nick Fermidi, Lincoln teacher, who has requested the establishment of the Elkhorn City Mentoring Club. The purpose of the club is for 11th and 12th grade students to mentor younger students. Nick will act as a sponsor of the club and is asking for no dividends at this time.
Can I ask a question on that?
Sure.
The student council already provides that.
For 7th grade.
This is just for, it's, the student council does it for 7th grade?
We do that a couple of times a year for 7th graders, the hole in the cafeteria. This is something above and beyond that, if you'd like to do it.
What will this do?
It's, the constitution's in, was attached currently. Yeah, they outlined it in that, in what was sent to you. It's almost like a one-to-one mentoring for students that, you know, that the older kids are mentored.
I'm just getting concerned that every month we're adding a club and our student base is dropping. How are the kids getting to use all these clubs?
There must be interest. I mean, I don't think that we would provide a club if there wasn't student interest. I know, you know, certain clubs do certain activities. We added that health.